Call our city council meeting to order. Unlike some of our meetings, we are jam packed tonight. Of course, Steve brings us a long list of things to discuss. So we'll be here for a while, so let's get started. I have a couple announcements I want to make. If you get up to speak tonight, we've been asked to make sure that you get in front of the microphone so we can get a good recording of what you had to say. Second thing is, I want city manager to introduce our newest employee.
Yes, sir.
And I bet you nobody here knows him.
That's right. So we've just hired, and he started yesterday, Mr. Darryl Brown came on as our Director of Administrative Services. Darryl, come on up.
Come on up here. Don't be a bad sprig, just get up there.
I have no prepared remarks. But again, my name is Darryl Brown, and I'm delighted to be a part of the city and serving in the Director of Administrative Services and look forward to serving our community as well as our council. A little bit of background on me, I was raised in Stanford, Texas, 40 miles north of Abilene. Came here to Tarleton State University in 1983, majored in criminal justice, worked at the Tarleton Police Department as sergeant, later worked for the executive director as the Star Council on Substitutes, and then worked at Town and Country Bank, locally-owned bank, for 17 years, and then at Tarleton for 11, and now have the opportunity to serve here in the city of Stephenville. So I look forward to doing that, Mayor, and serving along with you and everyone else. So thank you.
Welcome here. I didn't want to say I was with Jason all day yesterday in the car, and he said that he wanted to make sure everybody in the city noticed, there's a complaint. Your extension is what?
Well, right now, it's 2-1-2.
Welcome aboard. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our pledge of allegiance is going to be led by Leon.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we'll have Melissa Kesselberry from the Church at Green Creek to lead our invocation.
All right. Okay, so I led the invocation at the chambers for the commissioners last week, county commissioners, and you know, I talked to them a little bit about how they were the mapmakers, the mapmakers, the leaders of our county, and so I say the same thing to you all. Y'all are the mapmakers laying out future plans, making big decisions for this city, and I faith that you do a good job and have lots of big decisions because there's a lot going on in our city. So I thank y'all for your dedication because it has not been an easy job in the last couple of years with all this growth. So thank you. So let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you mostly for these recent rains that are so desperately needed, and we thank you for these recent opportunities that have come to Stephenville. Lord, that sometimes that kind of stuff puts us on the map and changes our plans and alters things for our cities. Let it be for the good. Thank you for the dedication of these men and these women who serve to solve problems and to lay out new plans for a good future for this good city. May they listen for your guidance and serve the greater good for all. We thank you for Darren Brown and the goodness that he brings to the city. May your presence be in this meeting as decisions are being made to proper this good city. And we ask this all in your name, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much. Speaking of prayer, Thursday is our day of prayer, and it's still going to be up here or did we move it?
It's going to be inside the courthouse.
Inside the courthouse at 7:00 is our National Day of Prayer celebration, and in reference to that, I have a proclamation here I want to read that we'll read again Thursday, but I'll read it here on television. A proclamation for a day of prayer. Throughout the history of America, faith in Almighty God has been deeply rooted in the foundation and building up of this great nation. From the early pilgrims to the Continental Congress, to the many presidents and governors who have served, we have exalted the Lord, giving him praise and overflowing with gratitude throughout the generations as he carries us through the times of great crisis and celebration. And in our city and across America, the observance of the National Day of Prayer will be held Thursday, May 4, 2023, with the theme "Pray fervently in righteousness and avail much", based on the verses from James 5:16, "The effective fervent prayer of a righteous man avails much." And a National Day of Prayer has been part of our heritage since it was declared by the First Continental Congress in 1775, and a public law established in the United States Congress in 1952, approved by a joint resolution and later amended by Congress and President Reagan with Public Law 100-307 in 1988, affirming that it is essential for us as a nation to pray, and directs the President of the United States to set aside and proclaim the first Thursday of May annually as a National Day of Prayer. And leaders and citizens of our nation are afforded the privilege of prayer, affirming our spiritual legacy of instituting times of thankfulness and renewed resilience or reliance, excuse me, on Almighty God. We ought to exercise the freedoms we have to gather and pray, to unify hearts, communities, and our country, while we hold dear to our faith, freedoms, and one another as a fellow Americas all fearfully and wonderfully created in the image of God. May we take time to pray for our nation and our neighbors. Now therefore, I, Doug Sven, Mayor of Stephenville, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 4, 2023, as a day of prayer. Throughout the city of Stephenville, I recommend this observance to all citizens. Thank you. Our next item is general discussion. We don't have, if not had anybody sign up to speak, is that correct? Okay, thank you. Next item is Steve. Everybody get your products so we can get going. He said it'd take an hour and 45 minutes tonight.
That's right. I think I can do it in an hour and 45. Mayor, council, we only have three items tonight. One of them is the PD referred to as the front porch, and that one, I think, we'll have to spend a little time on just to justify what a unique and great opportunity it is. So that is PD 2023-001. The applicant is Mr. Reagan Thompson, representing TSU Catholic. Probably the hour and 45 is going to be reading all that into record, but it is a rezon of properties at 1292 West Washington, being Block 134, lots 12, 18, 30B, and 31 parts of of the City Edition. 1334 West Washington being Block 134, Lot 40, ATM machine of the City Edition. 1350 West Washington, parcel 3251, being Block 134, lots 1, 5, and 28 of City Edition. 1303 McNeil being Block 134, Lot 32 of the City Edition. 1345 McNeil being Block 134, Lot 31 of City Edition. 1353 McNeil is Block 134, Lot 30 of the City Edition of the city of Stephenville. And these tracts all have split zonings from B1 and B2 and R3, and he is requesting that they be rezoned to R3. So the Planning and Zoning Commission convened on April 19, 2023, and by a vote of six to zero, recommended approval of his plan development and the rezon request. And so that's where we are tonight. And to just give you the background on this property, he went to the PNZ, went to PNZ on February 15 with this conceptual plan, and this is for the development that will accommodate a community-focused mixed-use development on the front steps of Tarleton State University. It is referred to as the front porch. It's going to be comprised of 13,025 square feet of retail space. He's going to have 66 residential beds as part of the multifamily. Those will be, that will be on the upper floors, the retail will be on the bottom. He is going to have dedicated parking for those 66 beds, and then total, he's offering 191 spaces, only required to have roughly 166, I believe, and I'll have that note feathered down. Again, it's for mixed-use development. He will have 38 one-bedroom and one-bath apartments, 14 two-bath, two-bath apartments. This is 52 units, and it will again be 66 beds total. So 191 spaces. He is overparked, he's only required to have 165, so that will offer some relief to the immediate parking concerns that we have in the area. He exceeds landscaping requirements with this site plan. The anticipated completion date is actually going to be quarter three of 2025. That's been extended since the PNZ meeting, but does not offer any issue for us tonight as far as moving forward with consideration. He will be providing a deceleration lane and additional right-of-way dedication along Washington. He is working with Tech dot now for approval, access approval, and also on his traffic impact analysis. Setbacks from existing residential spaces are provided, and parking areas are situated to provide a buffer to those residential areas. The footprint will be similar to the existing building, but will extend south about 75 feet. The south side of that building will still be approximately 145 feet from McNeil Street. The existing tower, cell phone tower, will have an access easement between the tower provider and Mr. Thompson. There will be three points of egress and ingress on McNeil Street. Development, if we consider all of the properties as they're currently zoned and what could potentially go in those areas, this development actually offers a solution to retail and residential, in my opinion, at a lesser impact on the surrounding area than if we just use those existing parcels as they're currently zoned. His PD, he's asking for certain concessions, and I have those listed for you. Front set backward reduction along Washington after the right-of-way dedication, so he will dedicate the right-of-way, but the face of the north, northern face of the building will be 1.65 feet from the building line. He will also have a roof overhang that is illustrated in the rendering there that will protrude into the right-of-way, but it is at a height of 42.5 feet, so certainly above any height that would cause any traffic impediment or anything of that nature. Building height is proposed to be 51 feet with structures at 57.6 feet. Of course, ordinance limits that to 35, so this is a concession above and beyond what the ordinance limitations allow. Sign includes rooftop signage. Our sign ordinance specifically states that rooftop signage is prohibited, so this will be another concession if the PD is approved. Not all of the turn radius on the site plan meet the requirement of the fire department, but the ones that the fire department do, does have for access from Washington and exiting onto McNeil or vice versa, meet those turn radius. And as Ms. Betty Chu pointed out at the last meeting, these will be sprinkled buildings, so we have some latitude in that respect. Developers requesting that the existing cell tower height be authorized to be expanded or increased to a height of 125 feet if necessary in the future. Anything above the 125 would not be in this PD, and so that would, of course, require them to go before the Board of Adjustment, but if the council approves this tonight, then it will indeed allow for the construction of a 125-foot tower. It's currently at 80. I touch base that the, Mr. Thompson is working with Tech Dot for the final approval for access points onto Washington. We believe that that's all in the works and that we have no obstacles getting there. Believe the remaining issues are related to the TIA, which he is going to work with Tech Dot to meet the requirements of that as necessary. So with that, Mayor, council, be glad to answer any questions on this development. We've been working with Mr. Thompson for several months. Most of the, well, all of our reviewing team, all reviewing departments have seen this site plan, and I have not received any objections from those reviewing departments with what we're currently presenting. So be glad to answer any questions, and thank you, sir.
Jason, I appreciate you working with Mr. Thompson on the parking issue, get that resolved. That's a good call, I appreciate it. Questions for Steve?
Go ahead.
We'll start at the end and come this way.
So on the rooftop signage, has anything been proposed other than what we're seeing on this rendering? This is pretty much what you're looking to be. Okay. And then I just, Chief Isbell?
Yes, sir.
You want to comment at all about the turn radius?
Well, so when they sprinkle the building and give us... Absolutely, and we're involved in all of the plan reviews with Mr. Killian as well. When they sprinkle the building, we have the latitude to change some of those radiuses in the code for us to do that because the sprinkling, the sprinklering of the building, it pretty much meets what the intent was for our access. So we're good with that.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Somebody else?
Steve, could you elaborate a little bit about the cell phone tower?
Yes, sir. So the cell phone tower is, let me describe it, I guess as being behind cold smoke. That tower is currently at 80 foot in height. It did go to Board of Adjustments in 2018, I believe it was April of 2018. They were requesting an additional 10-foot. That was denied by the Board of Adjustment. Have been speaking with Mr. Thomas, if that's okay to use this in our conversation. Mr. Thomas and I actually spoke about this right before the meeting began. We believe that you are certainly within your powers to consider that as part of this PD and either approve it with the 125-foot approval or remove that if you're not willing to do so, but still let the PD move forward either way. So hope that addresses your question.
What is the issue with regard to the heights?
I'm going to speak to that.
Why is that?
And I've worked with Mr. Thompson on that. The cell phone company is worried about with the height of this building, that blocking their tower, and so in their lease agreement that they currently have, if you don't approve it, the PD will not move forward because the project is probably in severe jeopardy at that point. And I've worked with Mr. Thompson quite a bit in his negotiations with the cell phone company, and that was kind of the height that everything landed on to ensure that this building wouldn't cause any service interruptions for what it does in that area of town.
Okay. Thank you. Steve, the rooftop, is that rooftop access what's a little different?
I believe that's more for AC screening, for rooftop ACs.
A little different. Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Yeah, and you hit on most of it, Steve, but back to the cell phone tower. Is the reason that was ruled on previously by the BOA, is it because it's a PD that that gives us the latitude to make a different ruling? Because we can't overrule BOA, but we're going from its current zoning is very specific in the ordinance. PDs are not, PD is not part of that ordinance, so...
You guys are rulemaking, lawmaking. BOA just ruled on that at that time. It's not binding on you.
David, did you see something?
So I'm pretty sure I was on Board of Adjustments when this tower thing originally came about. I can't remember when. Do we have a lot of opposition from the neighbors at that time, and do we have any right now?
I read the minutes on that earlier today. There was a neighbor or two that spoke, representing multiple people, is what the minutes indicated. So I believe there was some concern from the neighbors at the time. And great question, we've only had one letter of opposition, one person show up at P and Z to speak in opposition, and I forwarded, or Sarah forwarded that letter to the council from previous hearings. That was not resubmitted, but we had it in hand, so I wanted to make sure that you were aware of it. So for tonight, those are the only letters or persons of opposition that I'm aware of. One letter, one person.
I read through those minutes as well, and I believe the one, the opposition that was there, I believe Mr. Thompson has purchased those properties since then.
Okay. Somebody else? Hearing none, then we'll enter into a public hearing on case number PD 2023-001. Would anybody like to come and speak in favor of the project? Mr. Thompson, your opportunity. Anybody want to speak in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and consider approval. We're going to take these one at a time, 09, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. We'll take them one at a time. Do I hear a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion we approve ordinance rezoning property located 1292 West Washington, parcel R77944, from retail and commercial B2 to plan development.
Second.
Motion is second. See to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do I have another motion?
Mr. Mayor, make the motion approve ordinance rezoning property located 34 West Washington from neighborhood business B1 and retail, commercial B2 to plan development.
Have a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Mayor, another motion.
We approve ordinance number 2023-0-11 that rezones Lot 134, or Block 134, lots 1, 5, and 28 of the City Edition as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve rezon 2023-0-11, rezon City Edition Block 134, lots 1, 5, and 28, 1350 West Washington.
Did you mean, did you mean 2023?
That's what I meant. I meant the other one.
There you go. Okay.
The 1303.
Mayor, second.
Second.
Motion is second. Proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
Mr. Mayor, move it. We approve ordinance number 2023-0-13, rezoning Block 134, Lot 31 of the City Edition as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. See to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next one.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion approve ordinance 2023-0-14, rezoning City Edition Block 134, Lot 38 as presented.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Reagan, I want to show you that, how much excitement this council has, but everybody wanted their two cents worth on it, put it in that they helped you get that done. So thank you much for what you're doing, Stephen. Thank you, appreciate you very much. Steve, next item.
Yes, sir. Next one is a rezon 2023-03. Mr. Jackie Monk is requesting a rezon of property at 255 Park Street. This is parcel 30320 of City Edition Block 138, Lot 11, and part of Lot 1, city of Stephenville, from retail and commercial to R1. Recommendation from PNZ was on April 19, unanimous vote, six to zero, recommending the city council approve the rezon request. Little background, the applicant is requesting a rezon which conforms with the future land use designation. This is roughly 0.67 acres, has 128 feet of frontage along Park Street. Existing zoning in the area is commercial and one- and two-family residential. Again, the future land use is designated as R1. We have some maps in the staff report for you illustrating water and sewer availability and the surrounding properties as currently zoned and future land use designation as well. With that, Mayor, be glad to answer any questions.
May I have questions for Steve?
I like you bringing these that conform, Steve. This one conforms. Thank you.
Until we redraw all the plans.
Exactly.
There you go.
Hearing no questions, we'll enter into a public hearing considering case number RZ 2023-03. Does anybody want to come speak in favor of the request? Opportunity.
Go.
Love to hear from you. We love you spending money in town.
Well, thank y'all first for serving, doing what you're doing for Stephenville. My name is Jackie Monk, and I own a business on 1590 North Bay Street, and I bought this lot around the corner on Park Street, and bought it about seven years ago. It had an old house on it that couldn't be repaired, and we tore it down and cleaned the lot up, and it had this zoning already. And my son, my youngest son, he's moving back to Stephenville. He's been gone in Arlington for 16 years and wanting to raise his family here, so everybody knows the price of houses, how everything's going up, and we'd like to build him a home here on that lot if we could.
Do I have any questions for Jackie? Thank you, sir.
That's good.
Anyone want to speak in opposition to the request? Hearing none, I close the public hearing. Consider a motion?
We approve ordinance number 2023-0-15, rezoning Block 138, Lot 11, and parcel of Lot 1 as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. I forgot to ask for discussion. Maybe we have a discussion, but we have a motion is second. Hearing none, proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item. See, Steve, you really weren't as slow as you thought.
Moving along quickly, yes, sir. And if we make the entire city future land use PD, then everything...
That's a good point.
Way to go, Mark.
Next one is rezon 2023-04, Mr. Ryan Hill, and he is also here tonight. I didn't mention that Mr. Monk was. I'm glad you recognized he was available. Mr. Hill is with Shield Engineering Group, and he is representing Adam Phillips for rezoning property at 2290 West Harleton. This is Block 139, Lot 16 of City Edition, and he is requesting a rezon from B1 to R3, multi-family residential. Planning and zoning met on April 19, 2023. This was also a six-to-zero recommendation for the council to approve the rezon request. This request also conforms with the future land use designation. It's roughly one-quarter acre, has 188 foot of frontage along Tarleton Street. They will be dedicating additional right-of-way. As you see in the maps, this, the existing zoning in the area and use, a single-family residential and multi-family. Mr. Hill is asking for this rezon. His future intentions are to build a multi-family structure that will have frontage on Tarleton with this lot, but this lot also connects to a lot facing Dell Street, and so he will use both parcels for his site plan. And so that's the purpose behind the rezon. He will have some variances that he'll have to work with on the site plan through the Board of Adjustment if the rezon is approved. And so with that, Mayor, be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Steve? Hearing none, we'll enter into a public hearing on case number RZ 2023-04. Anyone like to come speak in favor of the request? Here's your opportunity.
You...
There you are. I'm sorry. You pointed that direction.
Hi, Mayor, Councilman Ryan Hill, Shield Engineering Group, 190 Forest Court, Alito, Texas. Yeah, Steve did a great job. We've been working with Steve and city staff on this project for quite some time, so I think we've hashed a lot of the issues out, but kind of similar story to the previous case. We, a wife and I had looked at this property to develop on our own, to do a... our own, to do, we're gonna rehab the existing building there, and we had a bunch of issues with that, it wasn't really worth rehabbing, so we luckily had heard that the property next door was for sale, so we got to get that, yeah, and hopefully we can kind of make this, make this thing work, so.
Questions for Ryan? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody want to speak in opposition to the request? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and consider approval of the ordinance. Dare a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve ordinance number 2023 O dash 16, that's block 139, lot 16, as it's been presented.
Second.
Have a motion as second, any discussions? Proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Steve. Mr. Cook?
Mayor, council, the Development Services Committee met prior to council meeting, and would like to submit to you the names, and I think Sarah has passed out the list, I will read these to you for the record. To serve on the Comprehensive Planning Committee, the Development Services Committee has approved these for submission to the council. They do represent a broad cross-section in the community of different groups along the lines that our consulting firm has requested, it is, we expanded it over what was originally requested, so that we could get even broader, representing the different groups. We have from the school district, Eric Cedarstrom, from the chamber, Kurt Plaxco, from Tarleton State, Lori Beatty, from E Ruth County, Brandon Huckabee, from, as landowners, Randy Hines, Greg Bruner, from CETA, Chris Gifford. As the chairman, this is by virtue of their chairmanship, from tourism investors, Chelsea Veldhuisen, from Main Street, Rita Cook, from Realtor, Case Horton, social services, Claudia Eisenman, who is the CEO at the hospital now, Texas Health Services. Social services, also Metacarier, who represents 50 Women Strong, and E Ruth Historical Commission, Larry Smith, from the city council, three people, Mark McClinton, Leanne Durfee, David Basket, developers, Reagan Thompson, Bo Mayo, Joel Allen, businesses, Chad Decker with Heartache, Jason Ripley with Technip FMC, myself, Kenny Weldon, at large, former mayor, Bruce Delater, and Mark McKendry. Mark McKendry used to be the chief engineer of transportation too, so. Those are our list, I think we have 25 on that, and we recommend and would make a motion that these be approved.
Have a motion, I hear a second. Did you second it, Mark?
I did.
Any discussion? I think you have a good group there.
I think it'll strong group, they will have their first meeting probably beginning in June, first part of June, we expect about at least two to three meetings in the summer months, followed probably two or three meetings over the next period of months after that. The entire process is going to take 12 to 14 months from now, so the work is, the work is getting underway.
Thank you very much. Hearing that, we have a motion as second, see if you vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. You want to report some more? About your committee, that was both, that was both those committee reports?
That was.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Durfee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we had the staff presented the request to reinstate the Western Heritage Advisory Board to the committee. It was created by ordinance in 2001, and, which was then amended in 2005, and, sorry, the, in 2016, the members of the council voted ununanimously to repeal the Western Heritage Committee through an ordinance, so we are coming back wanting to, we have a, we have a new ordinance that we would like to present and to bring the board back.
Okay. So that, you want to make that motion?
I.
You actually have the wording for the, for the motion?
Yes, I would like to make.
She can assign the number. You don't have to have the number to pass it.
Okay. I would like to make the motion that we approve the ordinance to reinstate the Western Heritage Committee.
Dare a second.
Second.
Have a motion as second, any discussion?
Okay. I don't think I was here for this committee meeting, why, why was the board disbanded? Originally, does anybody know, or does anybody have any history on that?
I think there was not some support from somebody that was in the city then, possibly, is what I've just read through the grapevine, I don't know that there's anything in writing, is there? Did we find anything?
How many people serve, will serve on this?
We are going to, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that, we're gonna have a board of five that'll go through Mr. Reesman's nominations committee, and they'll serve to your terms.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And this will be just an advisory capacity, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. It's our understanding, my understanding, that there's been several people contacted, and they were quite excited about it, about the city reinstituting this advisory board, so.
Yes, very much so, I have also had several people come to me excited that we were gonna do this, so.
It was a topic of, I went to the last Main Street meeting, and it was a topic of discussion there too, and somewhat excitement, I think, about bringing it back and doing something here with Plaza, and recognizing the rodeo performers that have become national champions here since all of it was originally done.
Exactly.
So it's good.
Other comments, questions? Proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, anything else, Mr. Durfee?
No, thank you.
David?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, on April 18, 2023, the Parks and Leisure Services Committee met, members were present, myself, Justin Hasky, and Bob Newby. On that meeting, we met to discuss the approval of the Stevensville Parks and Recreation Master Plan, there was a motion made by myself and seconded by Gerald Cook to adopt the master plan as presented and present the plan to full council today. The motion carried unanimously, and Darren is here in the, in the audience, if anyone has any questions about the master plan, I know everyone's probably read it from, from page one to page 372, but.
They missed a period in one of those pages.
They did miss a period, well, thank you for getting their gram around.
Before we prove it.
But are there any questions about it? No. Hearing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we accept the master plan for Parks and, the Parks Master Plan as presented.
Second. Have a motion as second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, anything else, Mr. Pascal?
No, sir, that concludes the, my, report.
Mr. Mayor, Public Works Committee met 18 April, everyone was there, we just had a discussion about the current status of some of the street projects, in particular, we talked at length about some of the brick projects that, that have been discussed before, and we've kind of talked about the priorities that the committee had in mind regarding the brick streets, we also talked about chip seal projects, we talked about paving the Encore Lot down there when we take possession of that, when the city takes possession of that, that piece of property, so it was really just a general discussion about upcoming street projects to spend the budgeted dollars for street projects this year, there was no formal action taken by the committee and none required of the council at this time, and there ends the Public Works Committee report.
Thanks, sir. Monica, your financial report. Oh, I missed nominations, that's where I, let's say nominations, Juan, I apologize, skipped right past you.
I'm looking at it myself, because I was at West Point Academy. So, I'll attempt to, so, again, I consider approval for council rules on, rules of procedure updates, so the committee was together and looked at section 31, regular business meetings, the council rules of procedures currently reads, they recommending revising, the council shall meet in city hall for regular business and adjourn, special meetings and regular business meetings are to commence at 5:30 on the first Tuesday of each month unless otherwise specified in accordance with state law, and then on section three, committee meetings and reports of this council rules and procedures does not currently address when or where the committee meetings are routinely held, so the staff recommended the following language, A, committee shall meet in city hall where their committee meetings, committee meetings are to commence at 5:30 on the third Tuesday of each month unless otherwise specified with state law. Motion was by Leanne Durfee, seconded by Bob Newby to recommend approval to the council of procedures as presented to full council, motion carried unanimously. Looking for a motion.
You can make that motion, Mr. Reesman, if you'd like.
I will make the motion that we accept the, the recommended approval of the council rules of procedures presented by the council, to the council.
Second. Motion as second, discussion. Proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, anything else? Is that it, Juan?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Monica, got you out of order, up and down, up and down.
Mayor, council, we reviewed the financial statements ending March 31st, 2023, halfway through our fiscal year, and we're still, you know, pretty much on target, things are, ads are a little bit better than what we anticipated, for the most part. For our property tax, we received 129,000 in the month of March, that's 460,000 increase over funds collected last fiscal year to date, it's 96% of the budget, it's about 110,000 less than we anticipated. For our sales tax, we received 722,000 in March, that's resulted in 673,000, or 16% more than funds collected last fiscal year to date, the amount collected is 54% of our budget, and that's about 376,000 higher than we anticipated. For the revenue received, the majority has been in the general fund at 56%, water and wastewater fund at 25%, and landfill at 7%. We've received 65% of our total budgeted revenues, that's over 3.6 million more than anticipated, and as you can see on the chart, that's due to taxes, intergovernmental, our charges for services, investment income, donations, and our debt proceeds. We received 2.3 million more in revenue than last year, and that's due to taxes, intergovernmental, and our charges for services. For our expenditures, the bulk of the expenditures have been in the water wastewater fund at 43%, the general fund at 36%, and the landfill at 7%. We have expended 31% of our total budgeted expenditures, and that's over 17 million less than anticipated, but that's due to our personnel contractual, and the big bulk of it is our capital projects. We spent 11 million more in expenditures than last year, that is due to personnel, capital outlay, and debt service, these were all things that were planned. And CETA has received an overall 58% of budgeted revenue through March, that's 33,000 more than last year, and 67,000 more than anticipated. CETA has spent an overall 21% of their budgeted expenditures, that's 147,000 more than last year, that's due to grant dispersments, however, that's 548,000 less than anticipated, which is due to capital outlay and also grant dispersments. For our investments, we have a total market value of cash and investments at the end of the March 31st was 71,650, 71,651,785 dollars, this is allocated 3% in our demand accounts, less than 1% in cash and money market accounts, 3% in certificates of deposits, less than 1% in US Treasury, 50% in our Techstar investment pool, and 44% in our Techpool investment pool. We've earned 776,000 of interest for the quarter, the average yield to maturity for all our account tops for the quarter is 4.21%, the average yield to maturity for investment accounts for the, for the quarter was 4.33%, and the average yield to maturity for our three-month treasury bill for the quarter was 4.63, so we're still trending a little low.
Questions for Monica? Good job, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cowboy?
Would you start the three-minute time? You know, I can't say my name in three minutes. Mr. Mayor, thank you, thank you, council, I appreciate the opportunity to get to visit with you, kind of a fun time here, I'm gonna go through several things, kind of try to piece them all together, if I can, it may not, you'll have to pay attention, see if it actually comes together, but this is kind of a fun deal, this marks my fifth year back in Stevensville, so this is fun to be able to get with you guys and celebrate, I consider these council members, our council meetings celebrations because of all the great things that you guys get to do on behalf, and thank you all, and thank you, Jason, also for taking charge on some of these projects that we've brought, and I appreciate you, council, for seeing them through. It's Small Business Week, Happy Small Business Week, always good to celebrate our small businesses of the community, and next week is Economic Development Week, which we will, are excited to do, or celebrate as well, you know, this is the 19th year since 2001 that Texas has been named the best state for business, and it's towns like Stevensville that get to participate in that, in our, some of the, one of the big reasons why things get forward, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. I'm always gonna give you, David, birthdays and deaths and this day things, so on this day, the Red Baron was born in 1892, not only was he a World War I ace pilot, but he was also good at making pizza, I'm just guessing, I don't know that for a fact, I don't, anyway. Abraham Gesner was the inventor of kerosene, J. Fred Coates was the one who wrote Santa Claus is Coming to Town, we couldn't have a holiday without that, very religious song. Engelbert Humperdinck, which is just fun to say, I don't really have anything to say about him, Jason, or excuse me, James Dyson, who invented the bagless vacuum cleaner, Larry Gatlin, who didn't invent anything, but he, apparently all the gold's in California, he was born in Seminole, Dwayne Johnson, The Rock, if I didn't mention him, he'd probably beat me up. Deaths on this day, Leonardo da Vinci, Joseph McCarthy, J. Edgar Hoover, and everybody's least favorite guy, Osama bin Laden, all those are just interesting things, because when you think about their lives, they all had something that created a reason for them to even be mentioned today. So, here goes mine, this guy right here, when we were here the first time, this guy was born, Carson, my last, my third son, or my third, second son, third child, after he was born, we stayed here a few months, and then we moved on and did our thing, and then we moved back five years ago, as I mentioned, and in that time, we've had the opportunity to be a part of some pretty interesting things, thanks in part to the city, of course, as you know, we've talked about lots of things, Washington Commons, 156,000 square feet completely leased, the stable, which is gonna be seven tracts of new things, we've done some local projects such as the Restart Program, which helped 350 businesses that all to this day are still in business, we've had 32 facade grants, we've had collaborations with the city such as our TIF districts, our downtown revitalization projects, east side sewer projects, downtown lighting project, land development, future use meetings, we've done many other things with the city as well to help move things forward. We've done many other things with the city as well to help move things forward. Partnerships with Tarleton, Texas Economic Development Council, Texas Midwestern Community Network, North Central Texas Council of Governments, OneStar, the State of Texas, the USDA, Dallas Regional Chamber Economic Development Alliance, the Texas Development Corporation, Steadco, SBDC, and countless local groups that we have partnered with to do projects throughout this community. For two years straight, we've had, we've been recognized as community economic development, we've had awards for economic development merit, outstanding achievement in economic development. All of this, we've had, been able to do it with two administrators, two city managers. I'm glad Jason is here. City council members, we've had 16, and starting next month, I guess we'll have two more. Board of Directors, I've had 16 Board of Directors that we've dealt with during that time, and eight interns from Tarleton, which we're glad to have had as well. Nearly 200, over $200 million of new investment in this community. And that number's about to grow because we have another 12 projects in line right now that we can't really talk about much because they're in the early stages. The cool thing is that all of these things are happening in part because of what you guys do here and in part because CETA was created long before I got here. The cool thing in my five years of being back is that I got to deal with two, two particular people for four of those years, and actually a little bit longer, with Ricky and Gerald, who I guess this is their last big-time public meeting. There's one more. And so I wanted to say thank you on behalf of our entire board and our staff for the work that you have done and the leadership that you have had along with your colleagues here to make a lot of these projects happen. We recruit them, we get them here, we talk to them, we vet them out. We try to get some negotiations going. But at some point in the process, they have to come over to the city, particularly if there's a development, or excuse me, a performance agreement of some kind. And we thank you for your work and for your leadership and understanding that this is progress and so forth. There's also some movie stuff, which is kind of fun out there. We've also, one of the things you may not know is there's actually been four movies or TV series that have been shot in the last 30 to 45 days here. One will be sold soon. Hopefully, it's being shopped around to some networks that's all about Stevensville. And we'll talk about that at a different time. The cool thing is whenever I started this with, or one of the reasons we came back, and Joe can attest to this, he was on the CETA board at the time. He knew about our family situation and knew where we were. And to come back to a town that you have left is not always easy, even though we left in great, it was a great situation. But one of the things that we want to know is would this be a place that we could raise our children and that they would want to be here long-term? I had at that time an eighth grader who needed to, I wanted him to be able to be here for a long time. And he has decided to go to Tarleton State University and will continue here. And the reason he is 100% is because he loves his town and loves what's happening to it. The progress that has been made is a town that's awesome for kids, and it's going to be super awesome for those that follow us. So, thank you.
I just got a question. Are you going to put on your website the practice hanging?
I was, I was who they practiced on, and it didn't work.
Oh, that was you?
Yeah, it didn't work. My wife kept asking them to do it over and over and over. So, yeah, I don't know. We'll see. But it's acting.
All right, there you go. Thanks.
Yeah.
Joe, your motion to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we approve consent as presented.
Roger.
Motion is second.
Could I mention, before we get to that, just, I just want to point out that item number 28 is the payment on the elevated storage renovation project, and that came in under budget, same way Mr. Killen is conforming to our future land use map. Mr. Williams, thank you for bringing them in under budget.
Have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. City manager.
Yes, sir. Saturday is election day for all those that need to vote. We're busy this month and the month of May. You'll have TSU commencements in the middle of the month, Stevensville High School graduation at the end of the month, and then we'll be moving to Mulop Fest coming up pretty quickly.
Leeann, you going to be busy?
Do what now?
Just ask her if she's going to be busy.
On the 16th, we'll meet back in here to say goodbye to a couple of folks and swear in, certify the election and swear in a couple of new ones. City Hall will be closed Monday, May 29th, and observance of Memorial Day. And then finally, just so everybody knows, we did close a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, on the Castle Furniture Building down on Bellnap Street. And so we'll be relocating over time some CETA offices and some city offices in these chambers. And so we'll move forward now on planning what that's going to look like and, and get that drawn up and get it in front of y'all for consideration.
Mr. Turfee.
I just want to remind everybody, if you haven't already voted, please go vote. And want to congratulate the Taylor family on a wonderful LJT last week. Look, I, I don't know the numbers, but lots and lots of people around town. And still, try to find a movie star. We got lots of people around town. So, have a good week.
I have the privilege of going to be on West Point's campus for three days at their military academy. But the thing that was kind of struck me is looking out our window, there was a huge castle up on the hill. It was a very hilly area. And I asked the Lieutenant General what that castle was, and I never knew this. That's where the Wizard of Oz was filmed. And that's the castle today.
Lon?
I'm good.
Bear with me for a minute because I'm not going to have very many more.
You bet.
We approved some, some zoning changes tonight that were necessary to redevelop three properties, which is, is really significant, that our city is going through this transformation, that we're, we're reaching a point now where we're not, we're not just building new stuff in vacant land, but, but we're revamping some old stuff to fit today's needs. That's incredible. And so I thank everybody who's, Jackie and Mr. Thompson and Mr. Hill that. But, but thank y'all for investment, for your investment in the city of Stevensville and making the community better. Excited about the Parks Master Plan. I know David and Darren have worked tirelessly on that. That's something we've needed for a long time. But now we have a roadmap for what we're going to do with those parks. They're, they're such an important part of our city. And then the last thing is, is I just want to mention a request that I would like to see, since I won't be here to vote on anything. But we have all of these actors out here and all of this effort that's gone in downtown. It's an amazing thing for the city of Stevensville. And I just think, I don't know what the revenue is to the city, but I would like to see that money reinvested downtown for some sort of an improvement in downtown for that area. That's all I have. I'll save everything else for next week.
There you go.
I'm going to have bets on your over-under on how long you're going to take next week, you and Gerald both.
Gerald will beat me, I promise.
I know I said this during committee meetings, but I want to brag on Darren a little bit and the rest of Spire Group with our baseball and softball numbers compared from this year to last year. Total of our baseball and softball teams, our 2023 season has 56 Spire teams, 17 out of town, which is a total of 73 teams. The last year was 46 total teams. This year, we have 617 total participants, and last year we had 472. And then we've got over $31,000 in sponsorships from the community, which I think that's amazing. I think Darren and his staff's done a great job going out and pounding the pavement and getting local support for our, our parks and rec. Also, how many lifeguards are you short right now, Darren? We need 25 lifeguards. 15 and up. So I've already made my daughter start working there, you know? So I mean, you got, if you're, if you're 15 years old or, or older, please go out and fill out that equation to be a lifeguard so we can keep our pool going and not work these kids 60 to 70 hours a week. And then Nick, I had an issue with a, with a citizen that, that Nick helped me resolve. And I think it's, it's amazing to see some of our staff go above and beyond for our, for our citizens. So thank you.
Gerald.
Thank you, Mayor. My voice may not hold out for the next 30 minutes. Endeavor's true. But just a couple of quick things. You heard the, about the master plan for the parks. And it is a, it's a good plan. Good plan. It's going to improve our, our park system significantly. You also know that Retail Strategies, which this council hired, has gone over the downtown redevelopment plans and have, and have made some terrific suggestions. You'll see that coming up here in the future real quick. Those all go within the comprehensive city plan, too. And that looks both in, in the community redevelopment as well as the fringe development in the community and what is important, what the city needs to concentrate on and so forth. So all of this goes together. Otherwise, the community grows like an amoeba, little here, little here, you know? Instead of going with a plan in mind. The last time, it was 15 years ago that we had a, had a comprehensive plan. We're still, and Steve is having to deal with a lot of that right now. Now, coming up in about 12 to 14 months, we will have a new comprehensive plan of development that will guide this community for the next 15 years, hopefully. And, and maybe longer. But it will certainly set the stage. And these people here are responsible for that. So any questions or anything like that? Some of you have been named already. So, you know, you see the council and, and because the people here on the council have that opportunity to make that huge difference with working with the consulting firm that they've hired to do it. Be sure and go vote. Saturday is the day. Saturday is the day. Because today was the last day of early voting. And so Saturday is the, the main election day. And there will be new people up here, and we will have two people that'll be reelected. I, I told them earlier that both Leeann and Lon, they were wondering if there'd be anybody that would vote for them. And I said, well, there'd be a sympathy vote for them. But the fact is, I'm thrilled to death that they're going to be back on the council and, and the rest of the people up here, other than Ricky and I. We'll have two new people here, and hopefully they will meld in good and everything. I'm sure that they will. So I think we're looking forward to some great things in the future. It will be good for this community. And there's a lot of good leadership here that will be here to take it on.
Mr. Thurman, Mr. Cook, it's been a pleasure. It's been an honor serving with you guys. Appreciate everything that you both have done. And you guys have worked tirelessly for four years. Appreciate that, guys. See you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to call on Nick. Would you come here just a minute? Come on. This is totally un. I just got a text response out, sent Nick a comment. Would you refer to the text we just talked about and where, kind of where we are on that landfill?
Absolutely. So we've submitted an application to Texas Commission on Environmental Quality to expand the landfill. And so we've got our first hurdle complete. We've got a recognition from TCEQ that our application is quote administratively complete. That's one of the first big hurdles that we have. There's a technical review that comes after that, and we should have a response within 60 days from now. So we're very excited to keep moving forward.
And what does this do? So the citizens know if this get, once this get, I'm going to say it's going to get approved, which I think it will. When that happens, what's going to hap, what's that going to do for the city of Stevensville?
Oh, gosh, we're going to add decades to the life of the landfill. Yeah. We're, we're just really hopeful and excited that the life of the landfill will continue as we continue to make improvements out there. It's going to open up 50, 60 acres of usable space that was previously abandoned. So we're, couldn't be more thrilled to be on the right track to get that opened back up.
Same to the city, how much time and dollars, you think?
Well, tens of millions of dollars. And to open up a new landfill, the base that people will tell you, if you ask around the professionals, they'll say it's at least 10 years to open up a new facility, so.
And without this, we had about how many more years left?
Five to seven. And I feel like that's pretty aggressive.
Because of all the developments going on.
Because, because we continue to grow and thrive as a community. It's pros and cons. We're getting some great rates that are coming into the landfill. But on the flip side of that is the, the tonnage continues to goes up, to go up and fills up even faster. So we're on the right track, sir.
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure the citizens heard.
Yes, sir.
Where we are, we need to keep that in front of the, thank you very much. With that, we're going to recess into executive session. For those who want to stay, you're welcome to do that. We have a long list of executive session items. My guess is we'll be back for a while. We'll be back in here sometime before the night's over, maybe.
But maybe.
Let's head, recess.
Thank you.
We have some motions from what happened in executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to authorize staff to negotiate a sales contract for real property as discussed in executive session.
Your motion, your second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Anybody else?
Mayor, I make the motion to sell the real property located at S-2600 City Edition as discussed in executive session.
Motion, your second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize staff again to accept bids for real property with a $40,000 minimum bid as discussed in executive session.
That's a motion, your second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to approve a pay adjustment for city secretary and the city manager as discussed in executive session.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mayor, I make the motion that we renegotiate the current contract with the city attorney as discussed in executive session.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there any other items?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to authorize staff to negotiate a sales contract for real property as discussed in executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to authorize staff to negotiate a sales contract for real property as discussed in executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to authorize staff to negotiate a sales contract for real property as discussed in executive session.